The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
So, all the town council meeting, May 3rd, 2016 to order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilor Campanelli?
Here.
Councilor Evans?
Here.
Mayor Bezinski?
Here.
Councilor Luddy?
Here.
Councilor Panessa?
Here.
Councilor Rossette?
Here.
Mayor, you have a form.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a proclamation tonight. This is, so I'll go up and read this and...
I thought Tina was supposed to be here.
Yeah, that's right, right?
Yes, but Tina's not here.
You want to...
I'm not sure why she's not here.
Is she coming or you want to...
I thought she said she was going to be here to accept it.
Want to wait?
If you wouldn't mind giving...
I could wait, sure. We can move it till a little bit later. All right, move it down the agenda.
Unless you want to give it to an older American.
What's that?
You could give it to another older American, I guess.
Well, there's many...
That would be most of us.
There's many of us here, I could, we could give, we could give it to all of us, maybe, that are here, that are considered old, I'm not sure what age break...
And Rachel.
We're not sure what age that breaks off at older, but we're all getting older, I know that, so maybe we all fit in that.
July.
All right? So, all right, we will, we will hold off on that. So, the next thing we'll move on to is the audience of citizens. This is the time when if we have anybody from the public that wishes to address the council, feel free to come to the podium and state your name and address and we will listen to whatever you have to say. Seeing no one, I will move on, we will close that portion of the meeting and move on to our meeting agenda. And we'll start with our consent agenda. A motion, I guess we can combine all our consent items if all of you are comfortable and have read them over, pick a motion on that.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to accept the five consent agenda items tonight as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Reposed? Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to new business, item number one, Denise.
Yes, the Nutmeg State Games are coming up again this summer. This will be the 28th year for the games, which have been held in the area in Connecticut's largest multi-sport Olympic-style festival. The city of New Britain is again the host city and the Nutmeg Games have used this town of Berlin, the city of West Hartford, and other facilities in Meriden and other areas when there has been need. They are requesting to have the field usage fees in an amount not to exceed $11,380 waived for their usage potentially for the period from July 23rd through August 7th, specifically Sage 1 and 2 softball fields, the Schleese Field and the auxiliary field, as well as Zippadelli Baseball Field. Again, as in years past, this is worst-case scenario because they don't usually use all of the dates that they contract with. They do pay all of the out-of-pocket expenses that are associated with the use of the fields. And Pat Fisher is here from the Connecticut Sports Management Company and he's available to answer any questions or if there are any concerns.
Okay, great. Thank you. No, it's a great event in our town. We have any questions? Do we need Pat? You guys have been through this, this is, right, several years, right?
Seven.
Seven, okay, so, all right, any questions? All right, so let's make a motion.
Sure. Move to approve waiving estimated field usage fees not to exceed the amount of $11,380 for the 2016 Nutmeg Games to be held at Sage Park from July 23rd through August 7th, 2016.
All right, thank you. Second on that?
I have a second.
Any discussion?
I've got a, just a question. In the past, we encouraged that there be some sort of encouragement of those that come in to visit local businesses and some information. I just wondered if anything was incorporated. I know we had done that in previous years and just wondered if there was any plans on that. Maybe you could address your plans on that and helping encourage the use of local businesses.
Sure, yes, if you would. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, and I want to thank you for your past support of the games, greatly appreciated. I'm going to work closely with Chris Edge, the Economic Development Director here at the town. Chris was kind of brand-new last year when the games were going on, so we have a plan in place where we have some area maps to highlight area attractions and restaurants that we'll hand out at Sage Park to not only the participants and coaches, but the family members that attend as well.
Great. All right, sounds good.
In addition, the hotel or the motel?
Correct. So, we have, the majority of the events, 90 percent of the events are held in New Britain, but not one city in the state can host everything that we do. Just to give you an idea on the scope of this event, we'll schedule probably 650 team sport games in a little over two weeks. We're projecting about 7,000 athletes coming here. And we have a lot of out-of-state participants coming now, so we've had to have some host hotels. And our first go-to is the Best Western Plus in Berlin. And we've used them for the Nutmeg Games. And then we also have other events here in Berlin, like the Connecticut Masters Games that come up in May and June. We don't ask for any fee waivers for those. And then we also use the Berlin Plus for our host hotel as well.
Great.
Excellent.
No?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good to hear, welcome back again. We have a motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Reposed? Motion carries. Okay, great. Thanks. Number two, topic two.
At the April 26th budget referendum, the question was posed, should the budget recommended by the town council for the fiscal year 2016-17 be passed, be adopted? And as a result, the yeses outweighed the nos. And the town council now is to decide whether or not to set the mill rate this evening or any other time by May 10th by charter. I'm not sure if you wish Jim to discuss any of the recent changes that have occurred with the state, so you know where we stand.
That would be good. Welcome, Jim.
So I had to write all this down because there's so many things and this is still a moving target. So I'm just going to walk through what has happened in order. So, on April 5th, when the council voted to send the budget to referendum, we had originally budgeted the education cost-sharing number off the governor's February budget, which we have done every year. On the municipal revenue share grant, we had budgeted 75 percent of the governor's February number. At the April 5th meeting, the council decided to budget 100 percent of the MRSA sales tax share. And so, we ended up budgeting, and the budget that ultimately was approved, $6,290,335 for ECS and $1,213,0548 for the sales tax share. On April 12th, an unprecedented move, the governor issued a second budget, which amended his February numbers that we had included. This budget included very large cuts to both education cost share for the first time in many years. The statewide cut was $53.4 million, Berlin's share of that was $261,175. The MRSA sales tax share was virtually eliminated, $91.4 million eliminated statewide, which brought our number from $1.2 million to $198,000. So, currently, with the budget that was approved by the voters, if the governor's second budget went through as-is, we would have a shortfall of $1,275,922. Last week, the legislature came out with their revised, I guess, response to the governor's second budget. Their reduction to the revenue share was only $8 million compared to the governor's $91. However, we do not have a town-by-town breakout of that number. Just yesterday, the governor released what was called a compromise budget that would cut the municipal revenue share by 73 million instead of the original $91, and ECS by 19 million versus the original $53.4 million. Again, we do not have the townwide breakdown of the effect on Berlin. I have talked with Representative Eros Simulitz's office, Representative Bukas from Plainville's office, CCM. The session is supposed to adjourn by statute tomorrow night at midnight. I don't know whether that's going to happen, nobody can really tell me. I've heard one story that they will get it done. I heard another that if they don't get it done, they will set a special session for Thursday this week and try to get it done on Thursday. What happens is anybody's guess right now. So, we are at a point where the budget has been approved by the voters, as-is. We do not know what the revenue numbers should be changed to. So, I have talked to some other towns whose budgets were already adopted and did not go through referendum and asked how they're handling this, and their response was, we're going to see when the final numbers come in, whatever shortfall we have, we have to manage that by not doing capital projects, putting positions on hold, or whatever the case may be. In addition, I want to have the town attorney say a few words about the charter language on what happens when a budget is approved at referendum. So I'll turn it over to Bob for a minute.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Bob, you're on.
Yes, I was asked this afternoon, what do we do in a situation if we wanted to change the budget at this point? It's never happened. That's the first thing. I can't think of it, you know, usually when the referendum comes in and it's approved, that's a happy occasion, and you just set the mill rate and you move on. The charter doesn't contemplate any changes at this point. I can, I think you're locked into your budget, just the way it's written. It says when it's approved, that's, in other words, you send your recommended budget for adoption, and once the referendum occurs, if they approve it, that's it. I think that's the final step. The only contemplation of a change is where it's rejected, you can reconsider and do something. So, a fair reading, I mean, you could torture the language and play games with semantics, but a fair reading, a common sense, I think you're, you have a budget already. It's just a matter of setting the mill rate. And you really wouldn't know what to do anyway, because you don't even know what the outcome's going to be. I think you're in the same position as other towns, where you have to accept that you have a budget, wait and see what happens, and then deal with it at that point. And my only thought is, you either have to deal with what the state gives you, or the state may throw a safety line out there with some enabling legislation or a statute that says towns that have already adopted their budget can do X, Y, and Z, which may trump a charter, where you can go back. You know, the state would have to do something to allow you to remedy the problem, to go outside your charter language. But I think right now, you're stuck with the charter as written.
Okay. Okay, well, I mean, yeah, I think it's great that, I think for the first time in several years, you know, went to referendum, it came back approved by the voters, which is fantastic. You know, we did, we all did a lot of hard work on it, the town, the council, and everyone. So, yeah, I would agree, I would agree to start the discussion, you know, that I think we just need to go forward as it is, and it's adopted by the voters, and that's what we'll, we would do, is what would be my opinion, and set the mill rate and just wait and see what happens, because we have no clue at all. No one knows. I ran into Joe Eros Simulitz myself the other day, and, you know, he has no clue, so he's there, so, and so we just have to move forward. That'd be my opinion, so, discussion, whatever, everybody thinks.
I just have a logistical question.
Yes.
We were waiting to set the mill rate until the May 5th meeting, right? Now, we're not doing it tonight?
Yeah, I think that was just going to be, I think we had set that, Commissioner, Council, Council Evans said, you know, we were thinking that we would know by tomorrow night what the figures would be, but I would, I'm guessing that's just not going to happen.
It may not, yeah.
So I think the, yeah, the need for that meeting on Thursday probably is not necessary.
Okay.
The way it looks now.
Should...
So, yeah.
Okay. Should we set a different meeting?
Um, I would, I, yeah, I mean, I think that, I mean, that's a good question. I think we just go, you know, I don't think we know...
Mayor, can I make a comment about that?
Yeah.
Whether you set a different meeting or not, basically, the mill rate is not going to change.
Right.
Because if we take revenue out, we're going to take expenses out to match that revenue. So the mill rate is not going to change, regardless of when you have the meeting.
Right.
It's going to be as approved by the voters.
Right, and I would just, again, not knowing when this thing will be approved and what the money will be, I wouldn't set another meeting till we know, in which case, we could discuss the rest of it. Any other discussion?
Sure, Mayor, go ahead.
You know, I was just going to state that I think it's evident by the numbers that we have in front of us, the importance of coming out and hearing what the people have to say. In fact, the percentage of no voters, the actual no votes this year was double the no votes last year, but it's still passed by an overwhelming amount. So when people are aware of it and actually come out to vote, I think we get a better cross-section of what the town is looking for. So I just want to applaud all the people, and I know it was in conjunction with a, you know, a primary, which probably has something to do with it, but just the importance of having your voice heard, I think, is very important. So, I too think that we should go forward with what the voters have said that they wanted. I think also in hindsight, in this, for this council and future councils, trying to artificially lower that mill rate by saying, we're going to get 100 percent of what the state says that we're going to, we probably should rethink that strategy, just based on historical knowledge, based on what's happening now in the state. I just think, you know, hopefully that won't occur again. And hopefully, we won't be in as bad a position as the numbers that Jim gave us from the governor's first revision.
Okay, thank you.
If we were to change anything, and especially if you were to go any direction besides down, you would ignore the voters. So, I think it makes a lot of sense to go forward with the existing mill rate as presented. If you're going along in your own home budget and you had anticipated a particular raise or something along that lines, and it didn't quite happen, or a tighter rise, or there are other expenses that came up, we do adjustments. And that's exactly what we're going to do, and that's, this idea of the meeting for the following Thursday was really kind of a kickstart to discussion of our priority setting that's going to come up in our later months here, June and July. I think that because we don't have that information and won't have it from the state, that it would be premature to start that strategic discussion on Thursday. And I don't, Mayor, I'd recommend not moving forward with that meeting. And in essence, whether we projected using that state revenue or we found another place to reduce, we ended up at a position that was tenable for the voters. And I had heard concerns from many that were afraid it would not pass, so folks have spoken, and let's move forward with what they've approved.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Any guests?
Just that the voters have spoken, quite resounding, I was kind of shocked. But I think to do anything other than adopt this would be slap in the face.
No, no, I agree.
I agree with that.
Charlie, anything?
I don't think the charter allows us to change it at this point anyway, so it is what it is.
That's what it sounds like, yeah. Yeah, well, again, you know, the voters have spoken, we go with the voters, that's the way, that's the way it's supposed to be, and that's the way it should be. So, any other discussion? We good?
Before you...
Yes.
The body of the motion says that the mill rate should be 30.46, and that's incorrect.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
It should be 30.81. It's a .46 increase to the current mill rate.
I didn't think that was right.
So, yeah, it should be 30.81.
I guess that was wishful thinking, but, uh, that...
Okay.
Okay.
Brendan, you're going to just move to set the mill rate?
Just the mill rate, not adopt the budget.
Right, nothing else.
Okay, so, with that in mind, we take a motion.
I will move to adopt the mill rate of 30.81 for this year's budget, or next year's budget, all right?
Okay, second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Reposed? Okay, motion carries. And we didn't, did we set that, do we need to unset that meeting for the 5th, or did we never set it?
Nope.
We never set it.
Never set it.
Okay, so we will not take any action on that?
Good.
Okay, great, all right. Moving on, let's hope the news in the future is good news, or better than the initial news for our budget, for the whole state for that matter. All right, number three, Denise.
At one time, the Board of Education became aware that there was a need to have a turnaround, actually, an easement against five properties along Demming Road and Worthington Ridge, the extension on the other side of the Berlin Turnpike near industrial surplus, just to put you in the right vicinity. Back in December of '78, the five houses, or the property owners along that route granted a permission for the Board of Ed to use the area as a turnaround for the buses. At this point, the property that's on 337 Berlin Turnpike, which is on the corner of Demming Road and Berlin Turnpike, is looking to market that property for sale and became aware of this easement or permission that had been granted, and it impedes the potential value of that property. So he sought relief, and the Board of Education did some investigating and found that that route is no longer needed, so that the easement is actually able to be released. And so this is just authorization for me to release and forever discharge the easements granted in an instrument that was recorded back in December of '78, so that it doesn't affect the title, it's just the easement along the property.
Okay. I didn't even realize there was, can you cut through, is there a road there? Can you cut through there?
Yeah, there is. You can get from the Worthington Ridge Extension all the way through to Demming Road.
You can.
It's a little, it goes by, there's a business out there, it goes by a mobile home.
Yeah, the kennel, there's a kennel.
The Kettle River Run Kennels.
Which I use, so I didn't even know you could get there.
All the way through.
Huh, interesting. It never looked like the road went through.
It does in a very tiny spot.
Maybe do some, some four-wheeling maybe to get through it, or...
Actually, I think you could take that bus when I was a kid.
Oh, is that right?
We're around in Sam's Club parking lot now.
Oh, that's funny.
Or what used to be Sam's Club parking lot.
Interesting. Chris, do you have any input on this now? Not that we need any.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, working with a group interested in doing a development on that corner, the long-term plan is to have a cul-de-sac at the end of Worthington Ridge Extension. That way, the full property can be used for that development.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, motion on this?
Move to authorize the town manager to release and forever discharge of record those certain easements granted in that certain instrument, recorded December 27th, 1978, in volume 207, at page 479 of the Berlin Land Records.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Number four.
This is a transfer that's being requested by John Zuck at the golf course from the blue-collar personnel account to the part-time and summer-help account in the amount of $9,500. Basically, there's enough money in the blue-collar personnel because of a transfer from the Department of one of the individuals that worked at the golf course now over to the Water Control Department. And the increase is sought because of several factors which are laid out here. We went longer in the winter and earlier in this, I mean, longer in the fall and earlier in the winter, number one. There is also, if you recall, last May, or at the end of May, beginning of June, there was the flood that kind of affected Timberland, and there were a lot of, there was a lot of damage to all of the sand traps, and the crew had to be out there to help the reconstruction project, and a summer employee was kept on staff for an extra month. So, the monies need to just be switched.
Okay, thank you. Motion on this?
Move to approve a transfer from the blue-collar personnel account into the part-time and summer-help account in the amount of $9,500.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Number five.
If anyone has been into the Blanche Delaney Room at the Berlin Library, Peck Memorial Library, you understand that that's a very heavily utilized room by many groups. One of... That's number five.
It is?
She's on there for two more.
Wise guy.
I'm sorry, I have a different agenda.
You have a different agenda?
I guess I do.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Oh, no, I reversed it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's my fault.
It's okay, no problem.
All right, so this is the Blanche Delaney one, which might be six on the agenda, but it's five in your packet. Anyway, there's been a need for many years to upgrade, similar to this room, but upgrade the audiovisual equipment that's in that room, so that more use can be made by many more groups, and it would make it easier for movies and things like that. So the purchasing agent had invited four companies listed on the State of Connecticut Department of Administrative Contract List, and spoke to them about the lowest-cost proposal. HB Communications submitted the lowest and included ceiling-mounted projector, speakers, wireless and wired microphones, listening devices, and all-related hardware for the amount of $11,265.57, and they are recommending that this be obtained.
Okay, thank you. Motion on this?
Move to approve utilizing the State of Connecticut DAS Services Contract Number 13PSX0090 for audiovisual equipment, and issue a purchase order to HB Communications, Inc. of North Haven for the upgrade of the library meeting room in the amount of $11,265.57.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item, I guess, which was number, whatever, the next item, all right, yeah.
I'm just staying.
Okay.
The reference department was short-staffed for a period of time this winter, as one of the part-time librarians was stolen away from us by one of our tech helpers, and so the library used some substitutes to fill in, resulting in a shortfall. There is some funding available in the other professional personnel, and they're just looking for a transfer of $1,500.
Okay, motion on this?
Easy enough. Move to approve a transfer of a total of $1,500 from the professional personnel personnel to substitute as delineated in the attached budget change form.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Reposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see what you can do to get a tech back in there, because Minecraft is suffering really badly.
She's good to go.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Oh, my son's all excited about it, so, library's doing a great thing there.
All right, number seven.
This is for the replacement of the rooftop HVAC units at Hubbard Elementary School. The existing units are about 25 years old, and it's costly to maintain, they're very inefficient. Now, it would be the time with the roof being done to replace the existing units with the installation. The, in an effort, the facilities department will be doing part of the work, and we also have a rebate incentive of $5,250 from ever-sourced due to the high-efficiency units. It's direct, the purchase will be directly from Train U.S., Inc. under the State of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services Contract. This is to utilize that contract for the purchase in the amount of $46,932.69, and to approve automation controls to upgrade, and they are the sole source contractor, in the amount of $9,438 with a 10 percent contingency fee. And Mr. Solik is with us to discuss any questions that may have, you may have.
Okay. Okay, um, motion?
Move to utilize State of Connecticut DAS Contract Number one-zero-P-S-X-zero-one-five-two-A-A for the purchase of the rooftop HVAC units for Hubbard School from Train USA, Inc. in the amount of forty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents, and move to approve automation controls and upgrades to Sole Source Contractor Automated Building Systems, Inc. in the amount of nine thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and to authorize a ten percent contingency fee of five thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars if necessary, to bring the total contract amount to sixty-two thousand and seven dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Thank you, uh, second?
Second.
Uh, discussion, I'll just say that, no, go ahead, you go.
I just have a quick question, again, it's not necessarily related to the HVAC, but more to the solar panels, and what we're looking at from a timeline with that, and if that can be, get it all done at once, I don't know where we are with, with that yet.
Yeah, that's the plan, solar panels would be, um, middle and the summer, with major construction completing before the students return.
And, and that's along the line, I was gonna say, and obviously, the, the roof is all gonna be done, it's all just done together, but, in phases, but all completed by?
Next year.
The start of school?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's coordination for that, so, the school gets out on the tenth, hopefully on the thirteenth, they're ripping the roof off, so.
Okay, great, yeah, that's great. Well, again, we're getting it all done at once, that's, that's great, so we don't have to go back, and, uh...
We'll be coming back to you, um, probably the first meeting in June, we're a little late. Um, the state's a little tied up with, uh, the school construction office, so...
Right.
The, the winning bidder will be recommended to you, probably the first, if not this month, the first meeting in June.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, any other, yes?
Just a question for Mr. Solak. The, uh, Eversource rebate, just to explain your understanding of that, um, and how that's determined? If you know.
High, high efficiency equipment, um, qualifies for rebates, certain tiers, um, it's a, it's a determined value, I'm not sure how they reach it, but, um, all the rebate checks go to Mr. Ren, and we have a rebate account which we use for future funding of energy efficiency projects. So, it's been very beneficial to us over the years, a lot of upgrades, um, that money's helped subsidize other projects and continue with energy improvements.
I just was gonna add that it's, you know, it's a regulated type of thing that, that, uh, we don't necessarily have control over, um, and so, um, typically on things I've abstained from, but this is a regulated item.
Good. Good, okay, any other discussion, questions? All right, we have a motion on the floor, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. Number eight, Denise?
Yes, as council is aware, we have had four of the five, uh, labor contracts up for renewal or renegotiation this past fiscal year, and we have, uh, s- been successful in negotiating two, and this is the third that is, uh, ready to be voted on. And as we had indicated, there are some things that I believe that the town has benefited from, and I think there's some things that the union has benefited from, the sign of perhaps a, a fairly negotiated contract. Uh, the important or the salient features are that they will now be paid on a bi-weekly basis. Uh, they have agreed to the swap of the holidays, along with the other unions, so that, um, I think we achieve an efficiency there that we lost on Christmas Eve in many cases, and especially when the, the blue collars were working on Christmas Eve and no one else was, that was a, a very difficult situation. Uh, we have been successful in at least grandfathering in what was known as chem-time in, in the past, uh, which was negotiated into the contracts at one time because of chemicals that were in paints and other things that the, uh, crew applied. We have been successful, as the, um, cleaning solutions and the paints have now become, uh, free of any chemicals, there's no need for the chem-time, but for the, the people that had been working with the chemicals at the golf course, those will remain in effect because of the, the need. Um, and, uh, the proposed general range increases have been staggered, as we had discussed, so that we achieve a little bit more, um, of an efficiency in, in the two later years than we do this year. This year is almost over, so they're going to be a retroactive, which I think was one of the things that spurred the union to agree to the proposals. So I do think that this is a fair, and, uh, going forward, we'll achieve some efficiencies for the town, much more than in the past.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion?
Good. Move to approve the three-year agreement for the Blue Collar Employees Union from the period of July one, two thousand fifteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Yes?
Just quickly, I, I'd just like to, um, state again, I, I think since we, um, have had an opportunity to bring the, the labor attorney, and you, with the labor attorney, and the unions have really moved forward on these contracts, and I, and I think, just looking at the average, um, salary increase over three years, it, it's very reasonable, and so I applaud the union for approving this, I, I applaud you from the management perspective of pushing for this, so, I think this is a, this is a really good contract. Thank you.
Thank you, anything else? Uh, no, I would agree that, uh, obviously, there was a lot of negotiations, and, uh, we, seems like we were able to come to a reasonable conclusion, um, you know, and, uh, agreement here, so... We have a motion on the floor, all those?
Mayor, just wanted, uh, ask the town manager, I think you maybe have addressed it previously, but, uh, addressing the anticipated for the current budget year, um, your plan for, uh, covering, uh, what was maybe planned versus what is gonna be done?
Yes, um, you mean for this fiscal year or for next fiscal year? This fiscal year?
Yeah, retroactive.
Yeah, um, yes, uh, there will, there, it's, our money's available in the contingency, and when we determine exactly the difference, I think, uh, I shared with you the difference the last meeting, uh, we should have more than enough in the contingency because of the way that the winter has gone.
Great, thank you.
Okay, um, motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Number nine.
Um, the Cemetery Committee had respectfully asked the council consider vacating the appointment of an individual who has, was appointed in two thousand nine, and then reappointed in two thousand fifteen, but has failed to attend any of the meetings since his appointment. I believe town clerk has had conversation with the individual, and for some reason, he's just not able to attend the meetings, or?
I have not had a conversation with him, I did send him a letter, I've tried to contact him, um, his phone is out of service. The chair of the committee has, I believe, talked to him, and he's also been approached by, um, one of the members about attending, and he doesn't really give a reason why he's not attending, he just doesn't attend. And at this point, the Cemetery Committee is very passionate, and they wanna be involved, and they wanna go forward with it, and they would really like a full membership. So, it is interesting that he did make application in two thousand and fifteen to be reappointed, but he's never attended a meeting.
Yeah, that's interesting.
So, it is a unique situation, and, um, I look for guidance from you guys as far as what to do.
Well, I mean, uh, I'm glad somebody spoke to him, 'cause I would've thought, perhaps, you know, different, that if he's not around, but, uh, I, I don't know, I mean, that's, you know, if he hasn't attended any meetings, and doesn't appear like he wants to, has, right? People have talked to him, not you, but...
Yes, yes.
So, I mean, we do want our commissioners, we do hope when we appoint people, that they will show up and, uh, help, uh, you know, conduct the business of whatever committee they're on, so, um, yeah, if they're asking for it, I don't, I don't see a problem with it, yeah.
Can I ask a question of Corporation Council, in terms of, have we, has the council ever removed someone from a board for, for, I mean, does the charter speak to that at all?
Yes, it does.
Would we have the ability to do that?
It, it does, and in fact, and just so, uh, the town clerk is aware, I, I gave a, a slight change to the motion, we're not really making a motion to vacate, you're not vacating 'cause the appointment was already done.
Right.
You're removing them under section three-eleven, which allows you to remove people for these specific circumstances, absenteeism, uh, missing a certain number of meetings, or for cause, which is something different, you know, for cause would be, uh, misdeeds or something egregious, where you thought it was inappropriate or harming the town, but, uh, it's pretty clear that you can do that if you, you choose to, um...
Yeah, I always thought that, right, I know from being on the commission for a long time, if, you know, there was that provision that if people just don't show up, then we would have that authority to?
You do.
Remove them.
The council has that authority under the charter.
That's only for appointed boards, though, right? That's not for elected boards?
Appointed.
Appointed, yeah, appointed, yeah, yeah. And again, I mean, I...
I was on the same page.
Yeah, right. Uh, I mean, it makes sense if he's not contributing, and, you know, we can find someone who will contribute.
I mean, we can wait, and I, I, I'm not sure what to do, but, the, as I said, it is unique, it is the first time that I've had that.
And you did send, I see you sent him a letter?
Yep.
And we received no response on that letter to the town officially, but, but the, the committee has spoken to him, is that right?
Yes, my understanding is that the chair of the Cemetery Committee has, uh, numerously, numerous times reached out to him, because this really goes back to two thousand and nine, and then, um...
So this is not just a recent issue?
No.
This is, this is going back several years?
No, and then there's a member who has talked to him.
Okay. So it's, it seems like it's a bit egregious, I mean, I, I could see, you know, people, we all know, have issues in their life, and they can't attend for a period of time, but this is going back multiple years now. This is not something that's just, we're not just talking the last few months, yeah, this is many, many years, so, um...
Mayor, that was the question I had, and I think, Kate, I think you clarified it, but, um, the statement says, uh, was appointed in two thousand nine, and, and again in two thousand fifteen, and not attended any meetings since his appointment, and is that from two thousand nine appointment?
In two thousand nine, right, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
I just wanted to be clear that, what, I know, I feel very badly because we don't like to remove anybody, but...
Do they, do they have someone that's interested in helping?
They are actively looking for somebody, yes. They kinda got their second wind, so they really wanna press forward.
It's a bit unusual, but...
I mean, it's up to you, if you wanna wait until next week, or, whatever, I know this is, but I have to bring it forward to you.
No, I, I mean, I think, uh, you know, we, we address it in the charter, and again, I think this is, uh, it's not something we would take lightly, I don't, and I don't think any of us do, to, to do this, but, again, it's been many year, you know, this is not just a, again, like something comes up in your life, uh, whether it's illness, or whether it's a work-related thing, and you can't make several meetings, we all understand that, but this is, you know, this is obviously a multi-year issue, and again, if the commission is, uh, active and aggressive, and I, I think, you know, it would only be fair to the rest of the committee that they, um, have an active member, if that's what they're asking for as well, you know, so, I, I don't really think we need to wait on it, that's my opinion. So I, I, let's do a motion, and we can discuss it, or we vote.
Move to remove, uh, Mr. John Hackett from the Cemetery Committee due to members' absence from meetings per section three-dash-eleven of the Town Charter.
Okay, second on that?
Second.
Okay, uh, discussion, any discussion?
I'm just gonna say, I, I am gonna vote no on this, just because I think that, um, if they have someone that they want to put forward right away, I'd rather wait till that person, you know, that name is brought forward, and give this gentleman an opportunity to resign on his own. Um, it, it's not that, I, I don't think that there's an issue with him not attending meetings, I just feel that it sets a, a bit of a precedent that we have to, that we haven't done before, so, that's my rationale for voting.
I'm gonna have to agree with you on that.
Well...
Do you wanna wait on this, until?
No, we have a motion on the floor, and I think, I don't think it sets a precedent, we have it in our charter, that if you don't attend a number of meetings, then, you know, that, that is within our purview, and, again, I mean, if we're, are we gonna appoint people to committees, and they're not gonna show up for years, I don't really see the point of that, that doesn't help the town, it doesn't help anyone, uh...
There is a, um, one of the things to, is that the Cemetery Committee's been a little hesitant from my conversation with the chair, to seek out anybody, because there's not really a vacancy, you know, and it's...
Oh, I see.
Okay, so it, it's a...
'Cause it's full now, right?
Right now, it's full.
Okay.
You know, it's just a, a thought.
Can, can, the gen, I don't know if it's a gentleman or a woman, who spoke with this individual, did they ask him to resign, and he did not respond to them?
He, I, my understanding is that there's been conversation to why you are not attending the meeting, and there's really no reason given, and also, would you mind resigning? And he just has never resigned to, technically, he has to resign to me, to my, to the town clerk. It's, it's like, um, it's just difficult as far as, you know, and, you know...
No, I mean, it's, it's, I, I don't think any of us take it lightly, I mean, we don't do it often, right? Uh, and I haven't really heard of it on any, on the commission I was on, but, again, I think this is, you know, we, we appoint somebody, and it's, we expect them, you know, that they are volunteers, again, we understand that, but, um, we would expect them to show up and help every so often, I guess. And again, it's addressed in the charter, so it's not like we're, this is not groundbreaking, this is something that, that we have addressed, uh, as far as what the remedy would be if they miss, uh, and what is this, thirty, thirty percent, so he's missed a hundred percent, I guess. So we're well over, uh, what we have discussed to possibly remove someone, so anyway, all right, so we have a motion on the floor, any other comments?
No, I just wanna say, you know, I hope Mr. Hackett gets the message that, you know, there's no ill will here, that there is active people trying to move forward the commission, and I just hope there isn't any kind of a health issue there, or something like that, that he's afraid to say, but I think the commission's gotta move forward, and, and if he maybe comes forward, he can reapply, and we can...
Yes, and thank you for bringing that up, Brendan, in my letter, I did say that we thank you for your willingness to serve the town of Berlin, and in the future, you feel you have more time to serve on a board or committee, commission, please feel free to contact us, so that, I mean, 'cause there's, sometimes you're just involved in something, and you can't make the meetings or anything, but we do value him wanting to contribute.
I just have a question, do we know who the, um, chair of that committee is?
Ron Lindgren.
Yeah, Ron Lindgren.
And I know they've been, uh, seem to be taking a little bit more of an active role, I know they've tried to go forward this year and do that, so...
Is this one of the committees that, forgive my ignorance on this subject, it's something I try to stay away from typically, um, is this one of the committees that doesn't meet all that often, or is this, they have regular meetings?
They met very, um, they met a lot when they first started, and they had regular meetings, and then I think it's, in, probably started, and I might be a little bit off on this, Kristen, I apologize, but probably like about two thousand thirteen, and I know two thousand fourteen, they did not meet. Oh, that's in fifteen, no, wait, I'm sorry, it might be fourteen, fifteen, excuse me, we're in two thousand sixteen now. So in two thousand and fourteen, I think is when they started not meeting as much, and then in two thousand fifteen, they did not meet at all.
Okay.
All right, so this is something that there, there are several members that are very interested in trying to raise money?
Okay, all right.
And to, um, hopefully, go forward on, on some of the things in the cemetery. Whether they're gonna be successful or not, I can't tell you.
How many people are on the commission?
I believe that there's five.
Five, active, and then one alternate.
Okay, so five, I mean...
Does the al, well, one of you might not know this, does the alternate sit in his place regularly?
Yes, Barbara's been going to the meetings.
Oh, okay.
And she's usually here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she usually is, that's true, not tonight.
Oh, yes, right, okay, yes.
Threw me under the bus tonight.
All right, so in that case, perhaps...
So there is someone that would probably be willing to fill that spot?
Yes, she could go on as a regular member, probably, I need to check, um...
You need to have three, uh, you can't have more than three of one party, and, so, that's...
Is she, I don't know if that pushes it over or not, I have to look at it.
I think, I mean, you've got the, the chair of one party, and then one of, and, and this individual was just of that same party, and so without them, that would leave that one individual, so it still would be...
Yeah, so we would have to look at that.
Breaking at this point.
Unless someone's unaffiliated.
Yeah, I think you're totally right, David, I talked to, um, the chairman of the Town Committee for the Dems, to say, can you find anybody, 'cause I think this person is a Democrat who... for the, to say, can you find anybody? Because I think this person is a Democrat who...
Yeah, it says it on the...
Yeah, the chairman's, chairman's the same, and I can reach out to someone, and...
Yep.
Good.
All right, I mean, that's, I don't know...
Would this be the same sort of application process we've been using with the other vacancies, is that somebody would apply, the application would come before us, we'd have a chance to review it?
Yes.
Okay, good, all right.
Yes.
Okay. We all done with discussion?
Yes.
Okay. More discussion on this than...
On the budget.
No, we're even saying, okay, I won't, I won't go there. No, I mean, I mean, it's, it's an important issue. I, you know, again, I think, you know, when we look at people to, to appoint to these commissions, we would like him to be there. Again, I hope Mr. Hackett's okay, and, you know, wish him well. So, and again, if he wants to reapply to something, he's welcome to do, do so. So, motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay. Now we move on to appointments. We have one for the Central Connecticut Health District. Carolyn Waisaki is one that was in our, so take a nomination on this.
Okay, I would like to nominate Carolyn Waisaki for the Central Connecticut Health District.
Okay.
Actually, a reappointment.
Have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so moved. And we have a second one for the Veterans Commission. And we had a resignation, so we had an opening. It was full. So we had a couple different, two different names submitted. I actually did speak to both of them today, and I had a consensus from both of them. So Peter would like to be nominated, and actually Thomas was fine with that. And actually, Thomas, we're going to talk about some other things he's going to do to help the Veterans Commission. So I thought it worked out well, so I'd like to take a, a nomination on this one.
Like to nominate Peter Gelgano Jr. back onto the Veterans Commission.
Second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So moved, thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you give that to Ms. Campenali, please?
Yes, I'll be happy.
Thank you.
There's really no need for a second nomination.
Oh, okay.
I should ask for any further nominations.
Oh, that's it, that's right, that's it. That's it. That's what it should have been, right? Any further nominations? Okay.
That's all right.
So the mayor messed up, all right, that's all right.
Can I just point out that in your packet is the Pachac information? So this is, she's...
Where is that?
It's...
Plainville.
Oh, yeah, you know, I did see that when I reviewed it.
Okay, so it does give you some information.
I did see that, yes. Yes, good, I'm glad you said that.
All right, and...
So maybe the Charter Revision Commission can look at this and determine. When was the last time we had someone sit on this?
I don't remember ever having someone sit on it while I've been...
Probably 1978. There was one, but it's a few years back, but they, they didn't go to many meetings, my understanding.
I don't remember.
So would this be something that, is this in the chart, is this something that the charter would, this is something we can eliminate? Can we just eliminate it by what? Do we, as, we won't have to do it tonight, but I mean, we'll think about it, but...
They would prefer that you don't eliminate it, and I don't know if you have the power to eliminate it.
Oh, okay. It's not ours, it's a Plainville one, so we can just send names, yeah.
So it's just to have bodies and people interested.
And we have no one on it now, correct?
Correct. But it covers like Nutmeg.
Ever? Oh, okay, yeah, okay, okay.
But David's right, there was people on there when this first...
I mean, it does meet, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So what, well...
I had a lovely conversation with the chair.
Just a little more publicity, Mayor, you know.
Maybe, yeah, maybe we can find some, you know...
Get the YES Network back.
Yeah, I was going to say, you can't forget people who are mad that the YES Network's gone.
Yeah.
My husband.
There we go.
I think from time to time, we all might have some comments about the cable TV network. Good or bad, could be good or bad, doesn't have to, I'm not saying all bad, could be good. So I would think people would be interested in perhaps voicing their opinions, but, you know, I don't, I don't know. All right, well, I guess we can, whatever all of the counselors think, if we could find some, some interested people, we can put them on.
Mayor, may I just make a comment? I think what's being filmed right now goes out on Nutmeg.
Oh, wow. Our friends, our friends at Nutmeg, yes.
Maybe there's someone out there listening and watching that really wants to get involved, doesn't like the way the sound comes across the council, and they think the cameraman needs to help a little bit. I, I don't know. But hopefully, there's someone out there.
All you friends of ours in TV land, yes, if you want to be on this commission. I was going to say that, but I...
No, 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 no.
No, 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 I was not going to do it. No, I wouldn't do that.
That's off the record.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. No. So, yeah, if anybody's interested, please step forward. This is your chance to get, to get on this commission. So I'm sure they do some good things, so. All right, we'll just keep that, take that under advisement, and if we could find, you know, one or two people. How many spots do we have on that?
One.
Oh, all right, okay.
One, two?
Oh, two, I think, yeah, I thought it was more than one. Okay, well, we'll keep it in line for the future. Thank, thank you, Kate, for the information, and maybe we'll find someone to fill that. All right, town managers.
Just a couple of things. This Thursday, May 5, is not only Cinco de Mayo, but it is the National Prayer Day of Prayer. And traditionally, at 7:00 PM in front of Town Hall, the non-denominational group headed by a local resident comes and holds a vigil, a prayer vigil. So the public is welcome. If it is going to be raining, they'll be in the rotunda. I don't know if Thursday afternoon is supposed to rain, but this week seems to be kind of cloudy, so, but they will be here for 7:00. So if anybody is interested in joining them, they've done this now for about 10 years, I think, so it's, it's been every year. Also, at the end of this week, or this week and next week, is National Nurses' Week. So if you do have an opportunity, I know that one of our local nurses, Joanna Dama, was named the, or is receiving a Nightingale Award on Thursday night in Hartford. So that's a very prestigious honor for nurses. If you know anything about nurses, they choose one from every hospital, but this is our visiting nurses, and it's, it's very impressive to have that award. So if you have an opportunity to congratulate or thank a nurse, please do, because they, at least I know the ones here, work very hard. School nurses as well. So that's it.
Right. You know, I was, I saw today, speaking of award ceremonies, I saw the police department's award ceremony, but it looks like it's the same night and the same time as our council meeting, which is too bad.
It's the 17th, you're correct.
Right, which is our next council meeting, right?
You're right, yeah.
I don't suppose they could change that, right?
I will talk to deputy chief, but I doubt it.
No, okay, that's too bad. I mean, that would be something, you know, for...
There is also, it's that Wednesday, the 18th of May, thank you for bringing that up, there is a ceremony honoring Jeff Casner.
Oh, yes, in the morning.
At Maple Cemetery at 9:00 AM. So that's the Wednesday, it would be right after, I could remind you on the 17th, but it's that next morning. So if you don't have plans, that's usually a very nice ceremony that they do.
All right, okay.
Yeah, but I did see the other one, it's the same night.
Yeah, that's too bad, I test to do that night, but it is where it is. Okay, any special committee reports, reports? Yes?
Just with respect to the Budget Committee, again, I think it's been put out by the town clerk, some June and July dates, just repeating on Tuesday. Hopefully, you have those evenings open, and like, one of the things that I'm asking the, Mr. Ren, our financial director, to do is to have our financial advisor help us with some information for the coming years, so we can look at the impact of debt loading and so forth. So hopefully, we'll have some more development of that for the first meeting, and then take it from there, and where we can go forward, and keep taking care of our town.
Okay, great.
And any input from any other council members? If you'd like to see something that we talk about in that evening, please let me know. I'd appreciate it.
Okay, so did we, are those times good? You guys all saw the email? Are those dates?
I don't know.
Yeah, I know. No, I mean, I know, it's a little bit ahead. I mean, if, you know, if we, yeah, yeah, I mean, I get it. Plus, it's getting into the summer months, too. But, okay, any other committees? Counselor Communications, any communications from anyone?
I just wanted to remind folks, now that the primaries are over, I'm so grateful that everybody went out to vote this time, and, you know, thrilled that people voted on the budget. But I did just want to remind folks that as election season nears this fall, political signs do not get put on town property. It is against the law. We should not be affixing them to town property. That includes school buildings, fences, various other pieces of equipment. Please put them in the lawn, put them at your own house. But, you know, they do damage things if you affix them to items that belong to the town. And since we just talked about our budget, I'd like to try and, you know, save money where we can, and trying not to damage our town property is important to me. So I just wanted to send that reminder out there.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? No? Okay, so we'll move on to our acceptance of minutes of our Tuesday, April 19, 2016 minutes. That was in our package. If you've all reviewed it and are comfortable with it, take a motion to approve?
We'll make a motion to accept the town council meeting minutes from April 19, 2016.
Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
An abstention. Okay. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, I get, I guess, Denise, we never got, you want to wait till the next meeting? It'd be nice if, is it the date now? It's over?
No, it's Elder Americans Month, isn't it?
Yeah, I think, I think it's a month.
Yeah, we could do it in the next one. I don't know where she is. She did tell us that she was coming today.
All right, well, we can wait.
Thank you. Yeah, something might have come in up.
Yeah, that's fine, we'll do it next time. Okay. All right, now we are going to need a motion to move into executive session.
Make a motion to move into executive session for real estate, Connecticut, Section 1-200, 6D, Discussion of the Selection of the Site, Sale or Purchase of Real Estate by the Town on Southington Road.
Okay, and, right, and we will include Denise McNair, Bob Weber, Helen Riggins, and John Zook in that. We have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Chris, are you in? You're in, too. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, Chris Edge is in it as well. Sorry about that, Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so 8:03, we'll, we can clear the room except for those invited guests, and we'll wait through the camera. It's turned off.